All right. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us for the, what we call the budget recap meeting for 2022. We started this, I guess this is the sixth.
Speak into my phone.
Is that better? Okay. We started this process of doing a recap on the prior year's budget. I think this is the sixth time we've done it. It was something that was important to me as then the new chair, the Finance Committee, because I always feel like people set budgets and then they move on to the next budget, but people should really know. So how'd you do against that budget? So that's why we're here tonight. We can start with doing some introductions. I'm Lynda Habgood. I am the councilwoman for Ward One and also the Chair of the Finance Committee. And I have a couple of other jobs, too, but tonight that's the most important job, I guess. The Town Administrator, Jim Gildea, is here with us. Scott Olson, our CFO. Our new Assistant Town Administrator, Heather Ray. Heather is new to this job, but has a lot of experience in municipal budgeting. So we're really excited to have her join us for this year's budget process. And then we are always supported in the process through Supplee Clooney, who's our auditing firm, and Rogan McCarthy, who's our Bond Counsel. Scott Katz is here tonight. He sits on the Finance Committee with me. We have two other members of the Finance Committee, Emily Root and the Vice Chair, Mark Parmley, both of whom are not able to be here tonight. And then I also want to give a quick shout out to our Investment Advisory Council, which is a core of resident volunteers with finance specialties who step in throughout the year to help us do analysis on certain things that we're trying to make decisions about. So we're going to do a quick overview of what the budget looked like in 2022. I think it's always good to look at this in pie charts, and we try to send this out to the public on a fairly regular basis. I think the most important takeaway from this slide is really what the overall tax collection number is at the top, and then the 16-ish percent that is the municipal tax levy. So it's only that $30 million that the whole town runs on, on an annual basis. And you can see from the other percentages, the amount of money that, from your taxpayer dollars, that goes to support the school district, support Union County, and the library. And then also important, as you look through the numbers for the 22 budget, and most budgets look similar to this. This is a good overview of the costs that we have. And as you look through this list, and we'll talk about this a little bit more later in the presentation, there are a lot of things each year that we don't have a lot of control over. You know, we do a very good job at controlling salary and wages, and, you know, we try to always contribute monies to the Capital Improvement Fund. That's what allows us to take new projects on, including roads. You know, you'll see, you know, our operating expenses are, you know, quite low. You know, when you get into the statutory and required amounts at the bottom, that 37% are things that we don't control. So every year, when we find out what those amounts are going to be, it's always interesting. That's where the puzzle starts of putting the budget together. So this is just a recap. This was a slide that we pulled from our presentation of the 2022 budget that shows, you know, in three categories, what our spending challenges were, what we were doing to conserve surplus, and our goal always is to have the lowest possible tax increase for residents. As you look through these categories, just as a reminder, we had a couple of things that we needed to find solutions for last year, including the fact that our required expenditures, right out of the box, went up 5.16% because we were handed health insurance increases and Broadway Valley Sewerage Authority cost increases. We also had some salary increases and, you know, operating expenditure increases. As we look at the surplus, this is important to reiterate to the public that surplus, we try to keep somewhere between nine and nine and a half million dollars at this point because we think that's a safe nest egg, the savings for the town. Given our overall budget size, the size of the town, we obviously want to have some savings in case we need it. The interesting thing is that we just got through one of the most difficult periods we could have ever imagined happening in COVID, and we were still able to maintain that approximate, you know, nine to nine and a half million dollars of surplus, which is our goal. Each year, you'll see that we'll allocate a portion of that surplus to help manage how much we put through as a tax increase to the residents, but we always have a plan for replenishing that. So we're very happy with the performance there. And as you can see, if you drop all the way to the bottom of the rightmost column, since 2018, the residential taxpayer taxes have only gone up 1.3% on average, which we're really happy about. So I'm going to let Jim jump in and handle some of these slides, and we'll kind of tag team from here.
Great. Thank you, Lynda. So as Lynda was saying, this is a quick slide about some of the things that happened in 2022. Again, as we just mentioned, surplus was replenished to 9.35 million, which is always a good thing to start off with, a healthy surplus. Also, we continued to make some progress on parking and court revenues. They took a really big hit during the pandemic, and we're going to have a slide that gives a little more detail on that in a minute, but those are slowly inching back, which is great. Very important thing that happened in 2022, and this was strategically decided by the Finance Committee and the Town Council, we had put together enough critical mass or authorizations of bonds, and we decided to go out to the marketplace to sell bonds, which is something we do. In a number of years, we stay in notes and then sell bonds when necessary. This was a year we did that. So what happens with that is we had to go to the bond market, have to do a whole bond rating process. We've been AAA bond ready for many years, but we had to put that to the test and see if our rating was to still be, you know, confirmed. So two things happened in 2022. We did have our AAA bond rating reaffirmed, had some great information in the report about our, you know, strategic budgeting challenges and success we've had over the years. And we're only one of 44 towns in the entire state of New Jersey that have a AAA rating. And now that we've had it, we've maintained it, and that's important to note. And again, on the bond side, and I'll let maybe Lynda say a few words about this, too, but she does this in her personal life, we had $9.9 million of bonds offered for sale, had multiple bidders, and got a 2.49% net interest rate in a very unfriendly market. No one has to tell anybody right now, you watch the news, and interest rates are not very good. So just another further proof that Westfield's paper, you know, bonding paper and so forth, trades very well in the marketplace. And I just, you know, do you want to add anything else?
No, I think that kind of speaks for itself, actually. You know, we were prepared, we were prepared based on information that was coming in from Bond Counsel that maybe we would have to pay as much as 3.5%. So when we were able to come in under 2.5, we were thrilled.
So that was a big deal in 20, and what that does is it sets us up for 23 and beyond. Now we have well-managed debt service, and we'll get into that in a few minutes in another slide. Other accomplishments in 2022, we had a very robust capital year. We paved six miles of road of our own that we budgeted for. We had another 10 miles of road paved at no expense to the town, paved by utilities due to ordinances that require paving when utility work is done. We also had drainage improvements done as part of road projects. We had Windsor Park enhancements done, new playground over there. There's more enhancements coming to that park in 2023. New Public Works and Public Safety Equipment purchases for police, fire, and public work. So those are all things we put in our budget in various categories, and we're able to achieve in the calendar year. We also, on budget expectations for revenues, we were able to exceed our Building Department revenues, and we'll see more about that for 2022 as well in another slide. So bottom line is, you know, as Lynda said, we, every town, not just Westfield, had a very difficult 2020 during the pandemic. We were able to make some very good strategic budget decisions that actually helped us get through 2020 and set us up for a successful 21 and 22, and that's why I think we're in good shape where we are right now.
Jim, you forgot, we did two budgets in 2020.
Yes, we did two budgets in 2020. We had a budget that was ready to go, and right as the town had everything shut down, we had to scrap that budget and redo another one, and that's really the difference, what made it, you know, get us to where we are today. So this slide here is something we've shown the past couple of years, and it's just, you know, important to note, and the title of this slide kind of tells it all, COVID impacts on surplus handled very well compared to the global financial crisis. So this shows you a snapshot of a four-year window. The financial crisis was obviously, I lived through it here myself, very difficult time, having to use surplus to avoid layoffs, to, you know, preserve services, et cetera. And you'll see that surplus balances were obviously much different numbers in the high $2 million of starting balances. But what we had to use, a percentage of use each year to get through those years was obviously very, very high. And you can see in 2011, in 2012, we basically had no surplus. That was obviously done by design to get through that time. When you compare that to the four years we just went through and are about to go into in 2023, you see that what's happened, much larger surplus balances, but bottom line is focus on the percentage of use column. We're using obviously 30, 39, 40%, roughly in that range. We're still preserving a healthy balance to take care of any kind of unintended or unforeseen issues in the marketplace or in our own budget. So this is important, you know, kind of compared to something else people can actually talk about, and I think it's a very healthy opportunity for us to show the public that we're in very good shape financially. Our auditors we met with this week, you know, starting off with the $9.3 million surplus is not, or $9.135 million surplus is not bad. One minor note, this is always something the Finance Committee looks at, surplus generation in 22 was slightly ahead of 23, or 21, excuse me, so about $40,000, $50,000 more. So again, in a very difficult environment, we're being consistent. We're not having wild swings of losses or gains. We're being very consistent. I think that's because of the management strategy we have. So a quick slide on just the court and parking revenues. These are two of the revenues that took a very hard hit during the pandemic, as you might expect. You know, police are not giving tickets, issue fines on vehicles and speeding, et cetera. And parking, we weren't enforcing, and we weren't charging money on the meters. People aren't downtown parking. People were staying home. So if you look in 2019, our regular revenue in the court was about $460,000,000 in parking, 1.6, almost 1.7 million. And you see what happened in 2020, that is, both dropped off dramatically. We've inched back up in both, although in 2022 had a much better year in parking. Things are still not back to full capacity, but we're getting there. We had a huge increase, over $200,000 excess in parking in 22. So we're inching back, but still, even though we're inching back, we're still over $500,000 less in those two categories alone revenue than we were in 2019. So again, revenue losses from COVID still impacting the 22 and ultimately 23 budget. And then a couple of bright spots for 22, there's always bright spots, even in difficult years. So Conservation Center, this has been a bright spot every year for us. We have a very active Conservation Center. We've had high usage there. We've added recycling opportunities, so increased permit sales for organic debris disposal, recycling use. As a matter of fact, this month, as we sit here today, we've actually expanded our hours in January because of the need for recycling during the week. So it's been a very, very good success for us there. Construction Department, I mentioned before, 22 was a very good year. We actually exceeded our expectations in revenue by over a half a million dollars. People are doing a lot of work to their homes. We have development happening in town, of permits that have been taken out. So those are things that actually help the town grow, but also help this particular apartment's revenue on an annual basis. Tax collection, we always have strong collection, and thanks to the residents for paying their taxes on time, Lynda and I included, but it's very important. It's a sign of a very healthy town, and our tax collection this year ticked up about 1/10th of a point, which seems like a small number, but it's actually not. 99.24% collection in 2022. That's a very healthy number. That's kudos to the residents of the town. Last two items are bright spots. We mentioned this last year in our presentation, we, like many other towns, almost every town in the state, received American Recovery Plan funds and basically ARP funds that we received. So we actually used them in 22, will use them again in 23. They had to be spent completely by early '24, and so we're using them to offset revenue, to offset costs for stormwater-related issues, public works equipment, public safety equipment, and that's a very good thing for us that helps us get through. One example of this is the next bullet point, Memorial Pool. So Memorial Pool is a public utility, so it's not supported by tax dollars, which is the greatest thing except for a pandemic. So when we had a major loss in revenue from people dropping off memberships, we had to recover that loss. The ARP money in 22 allowed us to actually submit money to the pool to cover that revenue loss, which then puts the pool not only on great financial footing going forward, thanks to the pool efforts, and Heather, before she left the Recreation Department, and Megan to continue, as we go forward, the pool's on great footing, memberships are back, the pool's doing better than ever, and that financial loss we experienced has been recovered due to ARP funds. That's a great, a great story and a great thing for Memorial Pool. Many other towns didn't have that same kind of success, and that's important to say that we did. And lastly, in 2022, again, every year, as Councilman Habgood has talked about, there is goals and objectives for every budget, and these are just some of the examples of things we did achieve in 22. Again, continue to navigate through the pandemic as everyone's doing and providing momentum for future initiatives, which we just kind of talked about right now. The downtown development plans, we've been talking a lot about, that's been something that's going on for a number of years now. We've expected votes on those projects or that project this month and next month. We also have an historic partnership with Board of Education, Edison School Fields, and so that's something that we're out to bid right now for survey, design, and construction management services, and that'll be a big 2022 project that will begin this year. Public Works, as usual, doing a great job, planted over 600 trees for the second year in a row, so 1,200 trees planted in two years, and that's, you know, probably a conservative estimate, but that's a number we pulled from the money we actually spent on trees from our budget, so we allocate quite a bit of money for that, plus we get grants for planting trees in the county. Again, we mentioned before the aggressive road paving, which went very well, and that will continue in '23 and beyond. We actually pursued and received over $1.3 million in grants, which is almost similar to last year, 2021, and that's actually the highest number we've received in quite a few years, so the same number in two years. And lastly, third year in a row, Green Team, to do their efforts, received Sustainable Jersey Silver Award. By the way, silver is the highest award you can get, there is no gold, so it's only silver. So we have received the highest award three years in a row due to the efforts of not only Green Team, Public Works, Recreation Center, very, very important information. That wraps up 2022. Anything else to share?
No, I don't think so. But does anyone have any questions before we start talking about 2023?
How many miles of road are there in the whole town?
Let me repeat the question for the audience. How many miles of road are there in the whole town? Approximately 100 miles of road. So. So, yeah, and so it's a, so the resident in the audience is asking about road paving. So just, it's an important factor. This year in 2023, it will actually, we'll be rolling out our new road assessment, an updated road assessment program. So we have a 2023 roads list, which has already been published, we're going to follow that. Once that is done, the roads list we have with all the priorities will basically be recalibrated with the new roads assessment data we just completed. And then basically the priorities will be changed if necessary based upon condition of roads, but this slide indicates it. We've paved basically 60 miles of road, and when I say we, they've been paved, most of those roads have been paved by utility companies at their expense because of the ordinance that was put into place where we require utilities to repave roads when more than 50 feet of the road is cut into by them. So we've had a lot of road paving done at not taxpayer expense, and that gives us the opportunity to do roads and other things with our capital money, equipment, drainage projects, et cetera. So we're basically, 60%, of our roads have been paved, and we're on pace, I think it was 2026 or '27, if everything continues as normal, we probably have most of the roads paved in town at least once, and then we start over again. But the benefit of starting over again, you don't necessarily have to do a full mill and pave. You can use other, maybe less expensive treatments to maintain road surfaces rather than have to do the whole road over again. So, good question. Okay, so that's 2022. Again, this will be on the website, everyone can follow along with it and have any questions. We do have a website or an email address we can, we'll remind you about. But go back to, or go forward to 2023, process is never really over with the budget. Process is going on all year long with the CFO, who's here tonight with myself, and so, but there is a process we follow with the Finance Committee, Lynda's Committee, and the Town Council. So a quick review of this, a couple of things we're doing this time of year, it's already underway, Long-Term Capital Investment Plan. The state requires everyone submits a six-year plan, which we always do. We actually, in the committee, focus on a very detailed three-year plan. It's very, you know, something you can achieve and kind of plan very much in detail. So that's underway now. Part of that's the road paving that was just asked about, drainage projects, equipment purchases, et cetera. So that's underway right now, and that'll be something we're hoping to have our introduction of our capital budget in March this year to kind of speed up road paving processes. Department budgets, of course, we're working on them now. We're meeting, we've been meeting for quite a while reviewing budgets, so that's going out now. We just met with our auditors this week, closing out last year's numbers finally, and the review process starts really Saturday morning with the committee, lots of Saturday mornings and Tuesday and Thursday nights to review things. So the next slide, again, Finance Committee Review, January 26th through basically the, basically late February, all departments will come into the committee, will be presenting their budgets, reviewed, asked questions by the committee, will be formulating the budget for each department, and then basically through March 10th, that'll be happening, the committee then presents the budget to the Town Council. That's expected to happen at the March 14th meeting. Council has a few weeks then, anyone who's not in the committee, to ask questions, give input, and so forth. And in the meantime, while that's going on, Scott and I and Heather will be actually working on the state forums, getting state aid numbers finalized. We don't get that till early March anyway. And then, of course, there's a public process in the budget, March 28th is expected. These are dates that are set as we have to meet with this, we have to meet the state requirements of introduction and adoption, or else we risk not getting some state aid. So right now, March 28th is the expected introduction date of the budget advertised to the public, and the public hearing is set for April 25th. And that is the fastest the budget can possibly go, believe it or not. So anyway, so it's a process that started already, and I know Lynda's always excited about the process as a Finance Committee Chair, but it is exciting, and it's, you know, being involved in the budget formulation is actually something that's really interesting when you get into it, whatever a department needs, staffing-wise, equipment-wise, operating budget-wise, capital-wise. It's actually something that's very enjoyable to understand what the council and the town's providing for the public and to the staff as well. So the budget process starts, this slide here is something we've been doing for the past six years, reminding the public of just the strategic drivers, big picture of every budget that we're looking at. Again, we're looking to always strengthen communication capabilities, and tonight we're in the council chambers for the first time doing this presentation because we have some technology upgrades, a little more details to come here, but it's something we've been trying to do. In addition to, we have our Public Information Officer here tonight. The amount of public information we get out through social media, our website, print media, paper, you name it, we are out there. Not everyone may agree we put out, but we are out there everywhere, and we really have a very robust communication strategy. Prioritizing infrastructure and safety, again, roads, drainage, public safety, fire chiefs here tonight, you know, fire department personnel, fire department equipment, police equipment, public works equipment, all important things at this council. Improving economic development and tax ratables. This is about what we're talking about with the development projects we have, but as the mayor said from day one, Westfield is very fortunate. We are in a beautiful town. Over 90% of the taxes are supported by homes, residents, single-family homes. So while that's a wonderful thing, there's not a lot of, you know, the main taxes are borne by the single-family home residents. So if we develop the town in a strategic way, we can begin to spread that tax burden to other more commercial properties and relieve the single-family home taxpayers of some of that burden. Doesn't happen overnight, but over time that does happen. We're seeing it already happen already, and the projects that are in the queue obviously can help that go forward. And lastly, enhancing services and operating efficiencies is something we've been doing for quite a while. We talked about it last year, but a couple of things to mention, the Building Department's a great example of this, Town Clerk's Office, Town Clerk is here tonight as well. We've done a lot of automation online, online capabilities, which were actually sped up during COVID because we had to. But the Building Department, for example, has all online permitting, online scheduling for permitting, and that's all just been, you know, a really wonderful thing, and people now are finding prefer the online opportunities. Recreation's had that for a long time with the pool signups, program signups, so we're going to roll more of that out for other departments, but these are the strategic drivers, we're always in the back of our minds every single year we do the budget. You have any thoughts?
I was just thinking about, you know, all that started really with the C Click Fix, you know, the Westfield app.
Yeah, C Click Fix we've had since 2019, and it's proven to be very successful. That goes to Public Works, we've expanded it, and now it goes to police and goes to other departments for, we have a lot of engine requests that come in that aren't just Public Works. Could be a traffic light issue, could be, you know, curbing issue, could be a pothole issue, but that's proven to be a very successful tool for us. All right, so 2023 budget goals, similar to other years, but worth going through real quickly. Again, responsible fiscal management is always important. We talked about before, surplus generation, surplus management, debt service management, we'll get into that in a minute. Aggressively looking for new revenue sources. You know, we talked about it many times, we're a very successful town, but revenue is hard to come by, no matter what happens, so have to always look for those opportunities. Prioritizing opportunities to increase and diversify tax base, we just talked about that, that's always a goal, to make sure we can spread that tax burden out more evenly. Prioritizing downtown economic recovery after the pandemic, which again goes to development, infrastructure, road paving, public amenities, roads, parks, recreation, the arts. And again, I just go back to parks, a lot of things on the docket for recreation. Our new Recreation Director is here tonight, we have Edison School Field on the docket, we have Houlihan Sid Fay bathroom and parking lot expansion, we have Windsor Park, second phase of improvements there, and more things to come even beyond that. So parks is always a priority, even more so in 2023 and beyond. And lastly, part of why we're here tonight, to solicit input from the public and hear questions through our budget@westfieldj dot, you know, email address to see what the public is interested in, to see how we can fit those kind of suggestions into our 2023 budget. So 2023 budget challenges, we already have information about our 2023 budget. Non-discretionary expenses '23 already up over $600,000. Good news here is, the same number last year was up over $1 million. So we're already doing a little better, but still, these are challenges, the Broadway Valley Sewerage Authority, pensions, health insurance, reserve, uncut taxes, debt service. All those five areas combined, over $600,000 of increase that we're already handed bills for and can't do much about. This is what Lynda was saying earlier tonight on the graph that you saw about appropriations, and Lynda knows this very well, there's not a lot of discretionary monies that the Town Council controls in the annual budget. We have debt service, we have deferred charges, we have statutory required expenses, we have contracts that are set. When you really boil it down, it's actually a very small piece of the budget that actually have discretionary control over every year. In addition to that, increasing cost of residential services. Everyone knows, inflation's there, costs are up everywhere, we are, we're not immune to that. Public safety, curbside leaf collection, curbside recycling, some examples. And then, of course, lastly, increasing, increases in utilities and sewer fees. These are our utilities, everyone at home, I know I've experienced it, increased gas prices, increased gasoline prices in the car, increased heating costs, we are also not immune to that. So we are experiencing that, we had a, our 2022 budget, our biggest over expenditure was in gas. We had, we knew there'd be gas for the vehicles. We're a public service, we provide gas to the vehicle, police, fire, have to be on the road, Public Works, they need gasoline. So that was one of our overages, we're obviously managing that for 2023, but that's one example that we actually had to deal with.
Jim, before you go into the next slide, I just have to do a shout out to the Department of Public Works related to leaf collection this year because we have tried a lot of different ways to pick up leaves, and I think this year was excellent. I don't think I got one email from a resident upset about a leaf collection problem this year, which is remarkable. But it is an example of, you know, how we're thinking longer term about, you know, ways that we can improve quality of life for residents, you know, even though we don't have control of our, you know, a lot of the budget, the things that we do have control over, we're constantly trying to figure out how we can, you know, reduce stress for residents, keep your taxes low, and keep everyone happy.
Yeah, that's a good point. They did a really good job this year, and they compressed timeframe, which was great. So that kind of leads nicely into this particular slide about well-managed debt service, we mentioned it before. So to give an example, we mentioned the bond sale earlier, that was by design, we knew that was going to happen, we did it strategically. And in 2023, the numbers I gave you before about the five large items that are increasing our budget over $600,000, one of those listed there is debt service, but I can tell you that debt service is basically flat in 2023, and that was also by design. So we have strategically managed debt service for these reasons, because we know that basically there are things we're taking on this year, namely Edison School Project, other road paving projects, et cetera. We know debt service will be increasing next year. So we purposely made this flat this year so we can manage those costs, plan for 2024. But again, debt service management is one of the things we do have control over, you have to really strategically plan for that years in advance. But either way, we are continuing with an aggressive but ambitious 2023 plan, which you think will be more, many more things achieved. Significant road paving continues, not only by us, but also utilities. We want more work out there, they're going to be paving roads again. Drainage improvements, we try to do drainage improvements with road paving where we can, or if not, we've all talked about other drainage improvements we can actually spend money on in other parts of town to improve areas that are not being paved. Recreation and park improvements, we mentioned already tonight, a lot of them on the docket for 2023 and beyond. Public safety improvements and equipment, that's continuous, and technology enhancements, again, what we've done here in the council chambers, and more to come. This is the first step in this town hall. This is the first step in this town hall, adding other rooms to this, so when we have meetings like tonight, that's almost overflowed, we can actually have, we can have, you know, screens out in the hallway, or have other opportunities for people to watch the, the meetings in other rooms in this town hall. So again, a lot of things on the docket for capital, and that'll be happening very, very quickly. Also, there's some opportunities in '23 we want to talk about real quick reminders. So a couple of things, ARP money we talked about prior. So we are getting the ARP money, again, we have the second tranche, and that's gonna be used, 1.5 million again, and we're putting that in the budget, we're gonna offset some costs and offset some expenses that normally would be capital, that might create debt service responsibilities, we're actually not gonna be able to, not gonna have to do that, one-time expenses, because what happens to this ARP money, it's gonna come out of the budget in '24. So if you're not careful, you put the revenue in, and the next year is gone, you have to make it up. So we're doing these things to make sure we have one-time expenses that come in and out, so we're not actually at a loss next year, so we're planning for that. That's a very good resource for us to have in our budget again, 2023. And the projections look very good, tax collections are strong again as usual, the Building Department shows no signs of slowing down, which is wonderful, so that's a positive thing, and we'll take advantage of some of those revenue opportunities there. And again, you know, we're on, we're in very good shape, the pandemic recovery is, we've gone very well, and we're, even though we have some losses still in parking and court as we outlined before, they are inching back, and we're, we're still on the road to recovery there. So, so in, in summary for '23, it's early in the process, but again, every year is physically challenging, because you, lots of things we don't control, but we're in very good position for where we are today, and, and we're to continue with the aggressive projects, initiatives, capital programs, et cetera. And lastly, again, we've said this a few years in a row, but it's important to repeat, going through the budget process, and this mayor and council, and the Finance Committee particularly, you realize how each year is a different story. Each year changes, we are given bills, we're given new state mandates that we can't control, and it's not just Westfield, every town has the same kind of challenges, and, and you have to actually be able to adapt. And we've seen that we rely upon very finite resources and revenues, and when those dry up or in one year can get evaporated, you're kind of in a very challenging place. So looking for new revenue sources, looking for conserving surplus, looking for new ratables, development, those are all things that over time help the budget every single year. But it can't be, it can't be lost to the fact that every year, every town, not just Westfield, has a very challenging time, but we're in, again, very, very good shape in '23 and setting ourselves up for '24 as well. So again, I mentioned earlier, we do have a, a email address, it's budget@westfieldnj.gov, had that for many years, we encourage residents to email us there, email questions, we do provide answers, and, and basically, you know, we're looking forward to input from the residents, basically beyond what we get tonight, and I guess I'll wrap up and see if you want to say a last few words.
No, thank you, Jim. I think that pretty much covers it, and, you know, obviously, send a note to the budget@westfieldnj.gov email address, come to council meetings, you know, let us know what your thoughts and ideas are. It's a very collaborative process, as I think, Jim, you know, really evidenced tonight, and, you know, all of the meetings that we have with departments over the next couple of months, not only help us to form good budgets for this year, but also help us to think about, you know, what we need to be planning for in the future, which is what really enables us to keep these really boring budget review meetings going on from year to year.